Okay, the meeting is open. Um, it's our regular meeting, but we have an unusual event to announce. We're not going to wait for the announcements at the end. We're going to announce it now. As the Select Board learned last night, the town has a new town planner. Jed Cornoch has been promoted from Assistant Town Planner to Town Planner. Congratulations Jed.
Thank you very much.
Clearly, the Board is very pleased, and it's going to be very good for the town.
And the audience.
And the audience, yes. Right, thank you. So this is a really good thing.
Right.
Okay, then, we do actually have business. I don't see a member of what I would consider to be the actual public, so we won't have public comment, unless you want to be that, you can be.
Well, I'm fine with that.
No, we're citizens also.
It's okay, Kevin, don't be.
Right. So, Paul, the minutes?
I recommend approval of the minutes of April 12, 2022, as written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. And we move on to our first order of business, approval not required. The applicant, Deana Matilda Lucadio, Lucadio, Leslie Trager, and Anna, I'm not going to pronounce this correctly, Cuselina, Plan of Land to Swap 2,080 square feet of land between 644 and 638 Brick Kiln Road. Is there someone here to speak for that?
Would you like to? I can.
I could move to endorse.
I think Laura's gonna...
Okay.
Thank you, Laura Moynihan, for the record. The plan actually has to be revised because there's a surveying error on the frontage that was picked up after it was filed by Jed. So, we called the surveyor, and they're working on the revision. So, I had suggested to Jed that we withdraw it without prejudice. He suggested that it just have an endorsement be withheld. It doesn't really matter to us, we just want to make sure we can come back with a different plan once we fix the surveying issue.
We want to make sure you can too. So let's, did you want to do this, Jim? Was that your plan?
No.
Oh, okay, then we will just...
If I may, I've prepared a draft motion for you folks.
Okay. I move that the Planning Board votes without prejudice to withhold its endorsement, in quotes, "approval under the subdivision control law is not required," end quote, "for a plan entitled Plan of Land for Deana Matilda Lucadio and Leslie Trager and Anna Cuselina, Number 644 and Number 638 Brick Kiln Road, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Warwick Associates, Inc., dated November 16, 2021, scale one inch equals 30 feet, as lots 3A and 3B shown on the plan lack the requisite frontage in an agricultural double-A zoning district of 150 feet. Sufficient information on the layout of Brick Kiln Road for the Board to determine whether the requisite frontage exists is absent. The applicants are encouraged to review the Board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of lands so that required information is presented and correct language is used in any subsequent application for this property."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you're all set. Thank you, and thank you Jed for having us ready.
Absolutely.
I just have a question. So, the issue is that they don't have enough frontage as a lot exists now.
Well, no, if they make the change, well, Laura, would you like to explain?
Yes, the northern, most northerly length on the plan, which is 145-16, that actually is not frontage on Brick Kiln Road. So, when you look at what's proposed here, it's taking away, I mean, this was intended to be just a very simple swap between neighbors, but we're getting, you know, we are getting into these complicated zoning issues, but the bottom line is the northerly lot has to still comply with zoning. So, the plan has to be revised to correct that lot line and show the accurate frontage on Brick Kiln Road, and then I expect modify the parcel two or 3A, the small parcel that's adjacent to Brick Kiln Road, so that it's not taking away frontage from that lot.
Okay, is it back at our next meeting?
Um, I'm not sure. We'll have to refile. So, you know, the surveyor got, we just came up yesterday, and the surveyor jumped on it right away, but is your next meeting two weeks from now?
Two weeks, yes.
Okay, we'll try for that. You know, it's, hopefully, we can get the plan done, get it to Jed, and make sure he's satisfied with it, and then we'll refile.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
So, next up, we have a Planning Board decision. This is Milton Flores', Continuation of Site Plan Review Application to Raise and Rebuild, and remember, they're not raising it, and rebuild an existing office residential building at the rear of the above referenced property and construct a two-story mixed-use building consisting of two residential units and office space located at 231 T-Ticket Highway. Jed, did you want to say something about this?
I would. So, midway through the day, around 2:00 today, we did receive modified site plans, and Engineering Division did sign off on the drainage calculations, so you are clear to read the decision into the records. Everything is all set. I've reviewed them, worked with Engineering to make sure that they're all set for you, so you are good to read the revised version with the highlighting. Yes?
Lovely, lovely. Bob?
Yeah, okay. Draft revised, April 26, 2022, April 26, 2022. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Milton Flores, Inc., for the renovation of the 1,874-square-foot office and residential building located at 231 T-Ticket Highway under Section 240-12.2, Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw for a plan entitled Proposed Site Plan at 231 T-Ticket Highway, Route 28, T-Ticket, Falmouth, Massachusetts, Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, dated December 21, 2021, with latest revision of April 26, 2022, prepared by BSS Design Engineering and Surveying, as well as a landscaping plan entitled Landscape Plan at 231 T-Ticket Highway, Route 28, T-Ticket, Falmouth, Massachusetts, Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, dated December 21, 2021, with latest revision of April 12, 2022, prepared by BSS Design Engineering and Surveying, and Architectural Plans entitled Mixed Use Design, Milton County County Valley, 231 T-Ticket Highway, Falmouth, Mass., Sheets A1 to D1, Scale 1/4 inch equals 1 foot, 0 inches, dated May 10, 2021, prepared by Designs by SPB Residential Commercial Design and Consulting, Cassett, Mass., with the following findings: The 0.46 acres lot currently contains two structures, a 4,938-square-foot commercial building at the front of the site and an 1,874-square-foot office and residential building at the rear of the site. The applicant is proposing to renovate and add to the existing 1,874-square-foot office and residential buildings by adding second-floor addition to the existing structure, all within the existing footprint. This pre-existing non-conforming lot is located within the Business 2B2 zoning district, which allows for two family dwellings, business or professional office use, and retail sales, all allowed by right. As there will be no work done on this existing 4,938-square-foot commercial building on the lot, it is not included in this application or decision. The proposed alteration of the rear structure does not require a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a change to a non-conforming structure, as the structure meets the required setback pursuant to Section 240-11.4A2H. Additionally, a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a reduction in the parking requirement pursuant to Section 24014.1F is not required, as there is no change to the existing nonconformity. No relief is required from Section 24014.G, as the existing travel with, between the two buildings of 12 feet 3 inches is an existing nonconformity, is not being altered by the applicant's proposal. There are four parking spaces proposed to be in the front yard of the property, which, according to Section 24014.15, will require a special permit from the Planning Board. The accessible ramp shown on the proposed front elevation will not extend past the edge of the building, as depicted on Sheet A1 of the Architectural Plans. There will be no dumpster for the property, as the new residential units will have curbside trash pickup, and all future lighting will be downlighting located on the side of the renovated office and residential building. The Town of Falmouth Department have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the Planning Board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the Board will condition its decision accordingly. The Planning Board's review does not include building code review, and the Board defers to the Building Commissioner as to issues related to the building code and zoning. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant complies with all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-12.2 of the Zoning Bylaw. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240-2.1C2 of the Zoning Bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights away. Three, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1 affixing illegible numbers required, time limit for compliance, as well as any additional signage requirements of Falmouth Fire Rescue and the Engineering Division.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to our next order of business, this is, we're extending a time limit, as you read here. It was requested, a continuance, it was recommended they get an extension for a time limit, and so, did you want to say anything about it?
Only that you'll be voting on continuing to the next, or till May 24, and extending the decision deadline to the 30th of June.
To the 30th of June. Okay, good.
So, I move that the Board vote to accept the applicant's request to extend the time limit for a Planning Board decision to be issued to June 30, 2022.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All set? We're good. Oh, Laura?
Sorry, my apologies. I represent the applicant. I think the motion should also include a continuance, because it's a public hearing, not just extending the time limit for decision.
I think we, I believe that's what we just voted, a continuance? Maybe?
Well, we didn't...
Well, you did a separate one for the decision deadline. Perhaps you could make another motion to allow the continuance.
Thank you. So, I will move that we also vote a continuance on this project, which is Larches Way to definitive plan application.
Second, any discussion?
To a date certain, which is...
Which is, what is it?
May 24.
May 24, thank you.
And Pam seconded it. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we come to what actually might be some business before the Board. The applicant is the Conservation Group Incorporated, Green Seal Environmental, LLC. Site Plan Review Application to reconfigure an existing parking areas and access driveways to be paved and striped in compliance with the Bylaw located at 81 Technology Park Drive. But this is, at the very end, it looks like a Technology Park Drive.
Public meeting notice was published in the enterprise on April 8, 2022, and native buttes were notified by regular...
Good evening. I'm Jose Picharo, Project Manager with Green Seal Environmental.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Jose Picharo, Project Manager with Green Seal Environmental, representing the applicant. Here, you can see the, on the screen, the existing conditions plan that shows the lot with the existing building and the access driveway, existing access driveway to the north of the, north corner of the property. Essentially, it's got an access that is used for the building, and an emergency access to the southwest corner of the property, where you see all the utilities that comes into it. The building is serviced by town water, underground electrics, has gas, and all the existing utilities will be reused. The building will be utilized as is. The proposal does not include any new buildings or additions to the existing building. It's only the reconfiguration of the existing gravel parking areas that will include the striping and associated drainage for the improvements.
Do you mind saying why you need to do this?
Sure. The building will be leased, and the owner wants to provide 80 parking spaces for the new use.
Okay, any questions?
So, this is, shows the existing conditions, so I'm going to show you what the proposed looks like.
Chairman, if I may. Jose, that microphone is just for the folks at home. It doesn't provide any sort of amplification inside the, so you don't feel like you need to use it like that?
Can you do something about that? That's not legible.
It's just, it's rendering.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, there it is, sorry. That was my eyes. I was seeing trouble, I was really having trouble with that, much better.
Now, you can see the proposal. What we would like to do is widen the existing driveway by a foot or two, that so it is 20 feet wide, at least. Most of the areas do have 20, but some are a little narrow, so we're going to be making sure that it's at least 20 feet, that so the emergency vehicle can safely travel inside, onto the side. The united spaces will be provided at the back of the building, and as you can see, along what it is the existing access drive, it's just an extension from it towards the southwest. The, what it is the existing emergency entrance now will be utilized as the main entrance for the, to access the building and the proposal. The, like I said, all utilities will be the existing, nothing on that, and I will change to show what the drainage that we're going to add to control, the additional imperials is going to be. So, essentially, the site will be graded in two different, two distinct paths, and collect on two double cash basins at the lower area. This will be cash basin number one, right here, cash basin number two. Those are going to be deep-some cash basins, because the area is on rapid infiltrating soils. We will be providing, according to the Massachusetts Stormwater Policies, 44% TSS removal prior to discharging into the, into the existing detention basins on site. So, it will be routed from the deep-some cash basins onto a 5,000-gallon oil separator tank and direct onto the existing pond, which is right here, this depression area. The largest storm will be bypassed directly, that's what, there's, is a regulation on the state, and those will be provided by bypassing the higher flows. In addition to that, I'm open to respond to any questions you might have. As you can see, it's a very simple project, no new structures, just the reconfiguration of a parking lot, making it as the regular yard with striping, handicap parking, so everything is, for the user, everything is as it should be, instead of just having a gravel parking area with no striping.
But is there anything you wanted to add?
Other than the fact that the town's Engineering Division had reviewed, as well as other departments had reviewed, but there are a number of outstanding comments, we forwarded that information to the applicant. There are several questions that they had in the review, and I have a few of my own, but I'll reserve those for after the Board makes their comments. But other than what Jose has just described, we understand it to be a paving of the existing parking lot, adding a new entrance, and dealing with some of the stormwater mitigation.
Okay, so, any questions, Bob?
No, that would have been my question, is there anything from Engineering?
So, it is included in your staff report?
Yeah.
Page?
There's no request for waivers.
None, none that I've seen. No request for waivers. There is an outstanding comment about a landscaping plan, so on the sheet, I believe, which is right before this one, materials and layout, there is some landscaping indicated, but through site plan review, we typically ask for a landscaping plan to be added to the plan set, so perhaps at the next, at the next meeting, you could have that ready for the Board to consider.
There's a question brought out by Engineering, and I would have it as well, that the new entrance way is planned to be 40 feet wide, and it's a drive-in, and under our regulations, it's no more than 24 feet wide, and we'd like to know, I would, and I think Engineering would, is there a reason that that's needed to be 40 feet wide?
No. What I did is, I wanted to provide was existing, if you look at the existing opening, that's the same dimension it has, the site has, so I wanted to replicate that. It doesn't have to be 40 feet.
Okay, but they look different on there, the sizing looks different.
We're talking about the wide, how wide is the opening?
Right.
It's exactly the same width, the same wide, 40 feet wide, that's what this one is as well. Just looks different. One of the comments, I think, is to add a radius, which we are going to add, but as far as the wide, it's exactly what the existing is.
I just have a minor, minor comment. I noticed on the notice and the letter from Green Environmental that talks about stripped, when I think you mean striped.
Stripped, that is correct, my apologies.
Stripped is a little different.
Yeah, a little bit.
So, I assume you mean striped.
That is correct. Markings, paving markings.
We did it too.
I will add, though, I think it's a good idea to have another entrance to this area. I'm familiar with that building, and it is a very good idea to have a new access coming out of the building. I also question why it has to be so wide, but that's not a problem.
On the other hand, there could be big vehicles coming in and out, and given the nature of that access road in the industrial park, it does no harm, so Jed?
That was going to be my question, do you anticipate truck traffic coming in and out of the site, or is it mostly passenger vehicles?
It will be mostly regular deliveries, the typical UPS or Amazon truck that you see everywhere. So, I can make it, require 20 feet, I would rather have a wider one, just in case I use changes in the future. It's there.
Well, generally speaking, we prefer permeable things, so the less asphalt, the better, I would think.
Okay, then 20 feet will be.
I'm just curious, what type of business do you intend to go in there? It looks like it's just a commercial offices.
Yeah, so, my understanding is that the, the business that will be here is already in the industrial park, will be the Laboratory Services Cape Cod Associates?
Associates of Cape Cod.
Associates of Cape Cod, so they are already here, and the idea is to use these for some of the offices, office space and storage.
The previous tenant was Woods Hole Group, moved to...
They are the owner, they own the building, it will be leased to that.
Yeah, but he sold the company, the company moved to Bourne. Thank you.
I don't have a problem with the wide opening, this is the industrial park, and I think to give them the flexibility, have changes in uses, is a good idea, and I don't see who we're hurting by having it extra wide there.
And I'd just like to add, in addition to that, that it's consistent with the other ones on, on the industrial park, they are even wider, there are some of them 50 feet wide.
Oh, you're saying of neighbors up the road?
Correct.
Oh, I thought you meant of the one that you were looking at. No, I don't see any harm in it either, but if it was an open question, then, and I assume that you have all these comments.
Yes, actually, we received those comments today, that's why I didn't have time to respond to it.
We don't need to read them to you, you've got them. Jim?
I mean, this, there's not much up there, I mean, this, at the end of this street, it's the winter, am I looking at, is there a wind turbine at the end of this street here?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I've been up in this down the street, that's woods, you know, I think it's fine to let them, I think the trucks pulling in and out need the space, and there could be another use in the future, and that we don't want them to come back. They're going to, if they're going to make all these improvements right now, I think we should let them do it.
I don't have any objection, it was in the Engineering Report, so I brought it up.
Right, right, they're questioning it, but this is a place where you should let them do it, is what I'm saying.
Fine by me.
I have nothing else, I'll work with the applicant in between the meetings to make sure that all the parking, there's a question about the parking calculations, so we'll firm all that up for the next meeting.
You think you'll be back at the next meeting?
If they're, if they're prepared to do so, I think the only outstanding plan, as I mentioned before, would be the landscaping plan.
Yeah.
And I'm perfectly fine if you guys would like to close this hearing today, I can, we can add a condition that we have to address all of the referrals, and I'm willing to do that, because what I've saw, the comments I received today, but I read through it, and most of them is just a matter of pointing then where that information is on the set of plans, and clarifying that we use, for example, in the parking calculations, we use the most restrictive number, and that's what I showed in there. I didn't see a need to see what the list restrictives are.
Yeah, they look at mostly their information, they're not changes that you need to make.
We'll have to make some changes.
Some, but not, not that many.
But nothing that I see that I cannot do, those are, it will be easy changes, for sure.
Okay, good, we'll be back at the next meeting.
I don't think I'd want to close the hearing.
That's fine, we can continue, that's correct.
Well, it truncates the flexibility that you and the Board has.
Oh, no, we're not closing it.
I suggested it, because if we don't have public comments that are against, I'm just saying, I will address all of the comments, no doubt. I just didn't have time to do it, because I got it too late.
Just a question, the dimensional requirements for the parking with the driveway through that, I assume somebody's gone through, and that fits all our guidelines?
It does, yes.
Engineer does all that, the 24, oh, I don't remember the exact numbers, but they got a driveway going through parking at both sides, and there's a requirement for the right dish, that's all set?
That's all set, 24 feet is the requirement.
That, I think that's really what we should be worried about.
Right, there are a few more things in there, but they're going to look after that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we don't need to move to continue, we'll just continue to the next meeting.
And for the records, I would like to submit the restrictive convention that was requested. I have it in here.
Thank you.
Like I said, it's not, it would be appropriate. ...appropriate, and the one that we're gonna be using are the numbers that I, I'm showing on the plans, because the other ones are less restrictive.
Very good.
Okay, moving on, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to continue to the next meeting?
Yes, we'll continue to the next meeting.
Okay, that will be May twenty-sixth, uh, May twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Let me, let me make sure that's right.
Uh, May, this is saying May tenth.
May tenth. May tenth.
Right.
That felt way too, way too close to July. So we'll see you back at May tenth?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have, uh, more business here, we have, uh, two discussion items, they're actually closely related here.
Oh, this is where the confusion has come in, because Laura Moynihan requested a continuance to May twenty-fourth, and that's what we voted.
Yes.
But our next meeting is May tenth.
She requested that extra time.
She did, yeah.
To allow, to allow for them to respond to the comments.
Yeah, thank you. Well, could have been, if I'm sincere. So, we're going to discuss again, uh, the termination of access, because the changes that we talked about were being shown, uh, revised draft to see what that might look like, and also looking at the, uh, planning board policies and procedures, to be sure that we're still, um, in agreement with all of those. Did you have a chance to look at them? Okay, so, let's have a discussion on it and see if we can't, um, put them to rest and say that this is what they're gonna be.
The determination of access guide, I'm sorry I didn't pick this up the first time. The first line there, this document is intended to guide the planning board, okay? Okay, when you go down under procedures, number three, bless you. Number three, conduct a site visit and comma if necessary, because there's, okay. The other thing is under conditions, number one, trim up to a width, it says, of number of feet, should be height of number of feet. I think, I think that's what's meant, because you have brushed back to a width of...
Yeah, it is height, okay.
What number is that?
Right there, under conditions.
Number one.
A number one.
Okay, so those are the edits, any, um, any comments on the content?
It's fine.
No.
Is it what you expected?
It's just a guideline.
Just a guideline.
It's just a guideline, anyway.
If I may, I could summarize, you know, the, the red text indicates the, um, language that includes the modification. The actual bold red text is the change that was, uh, created since the last meeting. So, and number two, when we talk about potholes that would be filled, um, we want to be, you know, obviously in this condition, uh, somewhat vague in terms of, of the type of material, because it could be pavement or it could be gravel.
Right.
And so we just want to leave that open-ended. And the traveled surface in number three, um, again, same concept. It shall be a width of, and a material, and insert here, so it leaves it open.
And we'll be filling at that time. And the thing, I think on number two to really take a notice of, is that it's across the entire length of the subject lots, frontage. Because the issues come up over and over, it's unfair to pay for the whole road, yes, it is, we agreed with that, this is the subject lots frontage, as long as we're all still in agreement with that.
I have a question of that, that means if there's a nine-foot section on the road, it's not in front of the thing, we'll still say it's okay?
Well, that would be up to the board to decide, so you'll still be able to debate it.
No, how would that be possible?
Oh, if we're limiting this to only the frontage of the subject property?
Right.
And the place down the street is nine feet wide, why are we bothering if you can't get in there anyway? That seems to be a little ridiculous. You're placating so the, that the owner of the property doesn't have to be burdened with this thing, but the street's still not usable.
Well, but the street typically has been being used, that's what we're told, so it's usable, it's just substandard.
Do you mean beyond the property?
Well, well...
Not in front of the subject lot.
If, if, if they're widening the street is only in front of the subject property, that means if you're way up the hill, and you're just widening in front of the thing, but down the street to get there, there's only nine feet wide, what, are we kidding ourselves?
No, so that, so what we're describing in number three is that you would wa- widen and improve the traveled surface from the starting point to the endpoint, which would be across the, the frontage of the subject.
All the way to the frontage, okay, I thought it was limited to only in front of, it's from the starting point all the way in.
Right, so you would, you would identify what that starting point is.
I'm clear.
It's two different things you're doing, one is filling potholes.
Right.
The other is, is changing the width and height.
Right. The other thing I, I wanted to just mention to everybody, that if you live on a private road, and you call up the DPW and ask them to grade your road, they will do it, they've done it in the past. So we should at least make sure that the grader can get up the road, and that we don't approve a road that they can't get in. But, uh, the, they'll, if you go to the DPW and they have time, they will come in and grade your road every couple of years. And so if these people maintain these roads, cut the branches down and keep it clear, we could have safe roads. But if they just let them go for thirty, forty years and then come back, well, that's what it's there, I mean, it's, I think the, there should be some burden on the neighborhood to keep the street passable, and if they let it go, they can't just say that's the, the way it is. Many times these streets were approved so long ago, we don't know what it looked like fifty years ago, the trees weren't even there. So, I know the group comes in and people talk about, oh, it's there, it's been there forever, but nineteen twenty and nineteen thirty, there was no trees in these areas. The, the planning board that approved them was a whole different time, so we just need to be real careful. I like the dimensions, and as long as the dimensions are maintained from the way in all the way to the subject property, I'm good.
Well, and, and this is saying those dimensions, that we've been treating as if they're a hard and fast rule, are in fact only the beginning of a discussion. They could easily be whittled down, you had said, um, last time we discussed this, that we need to be planning for the next fifty years too. And I've really dwelt on that a lot since that meeting, and I have no reason to believe that people fifty years from now won't still like these small country roads. I think they might, this is, so they're saying it's...
But if a blind person has to walk down the street and they're trapped up there, and they'll never be able to get in and out?
Not necessarily, they probably have friends.
Okay, that's the way you feel about it.
Sharon? In sort of an answer to Jim's question, but not really, because there's something else here incorporated in this. If you look under one C, it's with, with respect to having adequate width grades and construction provided for the needs of vehicular traffic. When you look at the next little bit here, it says adequacy as described above and herein, it's for the purposes of this activity, adequate shall mean as much or as good as necessary for the purpose. So we get discretion in there too, as to how wide we think it's necessary for the purpose.
Well, but what, I think what Jim is bringing up are purposes that aren't foreseen here, or aren't brought to mind here, that are unusual and exceptional purposes, and if we made all of our rules for extreme and exceptional purposes, we would have a very distorted set of rules.
So you're not really worried about the future, you're only worried about the people on the street right now?
No, I am worried about the future, and I don't think the future should be made less characteristic of a small town than what we find ourselves in now. If one of our responsibilities is trying to preserve and enhance the character of the town, I think we, we ought to consider its character as it is.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a, a change from some of the things that we've decided in the past on different sunrise estates and sidewalks and other things. We did look for the future, and in particular, we looked, uh, because people, houses change, owners change. And I'm fine to do it either way, but I was kind of brought up on this planning, do it during one way, and this is, uh, this is, this is diversion or change from the past.
But Sunset Lane had that in the initial, uh...
No, the neighbors all wanted to not do it.
Right, but it was in the plan to begin with, and they just never did it.
Right.
These are situations where that wasn't in the plan, and therefore it was never done. And I look at the future as anything coming at us now, we should be looking at the future. I, I can't, I don't think we can revise the past...
No.
To, to make the future in, in neighborhoods like this. And, you know, I still maintain that if you're driving ten miles an hour on a road, it's a safer road than, I mean, uh, my road is eighteen feet wide, and people drive forty miles an hour down.
But if two cars can't pass?
Well, the, the, people have, haven't had any problems with it, and if we're requiring someone in front of their property to widen it, that gives people a place to back off and, and, uh, turn around.
Why do we envision the future as wider and more paved and more cleared off than the present? It not, it isn't necessarily so.
I don't, I agree, but just, what I, my point is, the existing condition we say now is not, may not have been when the planning board approved it thirty, forty, fifty years ago. Neighbors move rocks into the street, they block off streets, trees get bigger. Okay, I'll be quiet on it if you disagree.
No, no, I think...
I'm all set with keeping nine-foot rightaways into big neighborhoods, if that's what you want, I thought our job was different.
I think that you're making good points, and that's why...
I thought our job was different than that.
That's why we're supposed to make site visits, and if we make a site visit and we find on this nine-foot wide road you're, you're envisioning, that there's a tree in the middle of it or encroaching on it, or a rock, then I believe we should get rid of that.
If there's a forty-foot rightaway...
Yeah.
And somebody wants to build a house, it should be safe to get, for them to use the rightaway, they have the right to use the whole rightaway. In these particular neighborhoods that we've done in the past, it was very clear that people actually took boulders and moved them into the street to block them off, because they didn't want people going in, they didn't want people parking in the street.
But what they were doing was illegal.
But it becomes part of the existing plan that we're all saying has to be maintained because it's quaint.
No, some parts of the existing plan obviously should be maintained, we're talking about not an existing plant, plant, an existing character, but the character shouldn't have a rock in the middle of the road.
It's hard to judge character on a piece of paper, but I, I'm done.
That's why you do a site visit.
I'm done, I've made my point.
So in situations where a road i- is in existence and it's been paved, but it's just full of potholes, and someone is buying a lot that needs an A and R, do we then require that entire street to have the potholes filled?
No longer, from this.
So, so just the potholes in front of the...
If, if I may, remember that the conditions that are included in this, in this guidance document are simply a library of, of typical conditions that you can pick and choose to be added to the, to your opinion. So it's entirely possible that you may decide to have the applicant fill all the potholes, or the board's opinion may, you know, indicate an exact opposite. It may i- say, no, it's not required, um, so that's, that's the purpose of, of these, um, these, uh, you know, opinions, is to, to debate it between yourselves, uh, but only use this document as, as guidance and a library of typical conditions.
I just wish we had a mechanism that would require everyone along the way to improve the road, because what we keep running into is the last lot at the end of the nine-foot road, and requiring them to do something about getting to it.
And I just want to point out, when we, once we determine a, determine, determine access, it opens up a lot of doors for things to happen. We've seen it happen in the past, because once they have a, a proper access, then they could do a lot of other things in a lot.
That's true.
There, there could be, it could be a four-acre lot up there, a five-acre lot, and it, access is adequate. Now all of a sudden, they're doing a forty B, and away they go, they've got a determination of access, and we approved it, and...
So we've got to determine as a board whether, uh, we make it so restrictive that somebody chooses not to purchase a piece of property.
Perhaps, perhaps.
Find a balance between the two, I guess.
John?
So are we determining access, or is the building commissioner determining access?
Building commissioner, we're giving an opinion.
They're gonna give an opinion, okay, so we all...
We're feeding information to that person.
Well, obviously, we all have opinions.
Right, we do, but the other...
But we're not determining access.
Correct.
Okay, and secondly, um, if I read this correctly, presuming the applicant gets an approval, gets a building permit, and b- and builds whatever they're going to build, says that the planning department and building department, once the improvements have been completed, will be inspected, will that be you, Jed, doing the inspection for the planning department currently? Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
That's a good clarification, if we're not determining the access, which I thought they were making us do in the past, I'm a, I thought they were being sent to us to deter determination of access. I thought that's we actually did the last time.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I think it's a mix of words, which is important.
Right, and that's why I'm confused. I agree with John, if we're not determining access and we're only making recommendations, that's fine. Let the building commissioner do his thing.
You, you are asked to give an opinion as to the adequacy of the way. That opinion then gets sent to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner considers your opinion when issuing the building permit. So in a way, you are determining, in your opinion, the adequacy of the access. However, the building commissioner may disagree with you.
Right.
But also may agree with you and say, yes, I also agree that they need to do X, Y, and Z.
Our determination is not authoritative, it's an opinion.
It's an opinion.
Only, but going back to your example of four acres up there, somebody could suddenly be putting in a forty B, and then you've got twenty houses up there. But I would think we're that to come here to us, we would say no, because the road is inadequate for that type of travel. That's more traffic than it would bear.
However, forty B...
Each one is an individual decision.
I...
Yeah, forty B.
I disagree, I think once they get the access, they're home free.
Well, we'll discuss it when we get an application.
Exactly, exactly. Remember, this is just the guidance document that you're discussing tonight.
Yeah.
Things to consider.
Yeah, we should consider and have good discussion, and let the building inspector make the call.
Paul?
I'm good with that.
Paul?
Are you looking for a recommendation on adopting this as a policy to the board?
Yes, yes. Not a policy.
Not a policy.
Not a policy.
That's guidelines.
Guidance, right. Second?
Second.
Okay, on favor of adopting this as our guidance?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good.
Subject to the edits that Ms. Kerfoot provided.
Yes.
Yes, with the, with, yes, cleaned up. Okay, then we were going to try to turn, transfer this draft, planning board, and there's that word again, policies.
So this is actually your policies and procedures, uh, and it's been, uh, for the board, it's been up on your website, um, and it includes a lot of different, um, procedures and information about the planning board.
Right.
And this is, you know, a- as I've discussed with, uh, previous town planner Brian Curry, this is, um, similar to, but not the same, as rules and regulations, uh, of a planning board. But, um, it does outline, uh, specific items such as, you know, conduct at the meetings, the minutes, et cetera. And what's included in this, uh, draft, and the reason it's before you tonight, is under regulatory matters, item C. We've talked about this in the past, in terms of how much time are we requiring for, uh, not only the planning department, but the board itself to consider an applicant, or an applicant's information before it comes before the board. The previous language here was, uh, I believe, Thursday before the regularly scheduled Tuesday meeting. What we've, um, changed it to is essentially one week before the next regularly scheduled meeting. We will allow for more time for us to receive it, review it, send it off for referrals, get the information back, but then also be able to provide that information to you folks in enough time for you to review it and be prepared at the planning board meeting.
Right, and we had discussed doing this, so that that's, that's, this is what we expected, yeah? But what I'm questioning, Jed, is the, the word policy.
Yeah, I got a question from there. Yeah, and item F, it said the board will maintain liaison. Should we designate who provides that liaison, is it the town planner, is it the chair? I don't think we want this board running around talking to all the different departments.
Town planner. It says the board.
So it should be maintain a liaison through the town planner. Sorry for adding that.
Well, through the planning department, which is run by the town planner, but I think it'd be through the planning department.
Okay.
And, uh, further on, on the end, under item four regulatory matters, public hearings shall remain open until the following Monday. Why don't we make that Friday? They'll have three days to come back with something, and if we have it on Monday, then we're pushing up against the next meeting. And I think if they have any objection, they know right away that night, and they should be able to come back by the end of the week, I would think.
Where are you again, I'm sorry, item G?
G, under item four regulatory matters.
And you're saying?
Why wait till Monday?
Okay.
And that'll give the planning department more time to react, if there is something to react to.
A lot of people get their information from the enterprise, and that comes on Friday.
I do.
The what?
Bob said a lot of people get their... Bob said a lot of people get their infor- information from the enterprise, which is going on Friday. I know I get a lot of information through the enterprise.
That detail doesn't, well, that's a point I had thought of.
Yeah, that's why we discussed. This hardly ever happens.
I've never seen it happen since I've been here.
Right.
What's that? That said it'll happen.
That we get a comment.
Oh.
Uh, about a public hearing matter after the meeting.
I've got a question on, on letter H, but Paul, you done?
Did we, so we wound up leaving it as the Monday?
Monday.
Because of the enterprise and knowing that it's an extremely rare instance, okay, Bob, then what?
On H.
The reason I was suggesting that, I was thinking more of the applicant.
Right.
Yeah.
Knows right away, and Bob's referring to the fact the public may be interested, and I think he has a valid point.
They have a chance to get enraged over.
Yeah, okay.
On a Friday.
The applicant knows right away.
I know it's a breakfast topic when we, we meet on Fridays. So H, um, I, I, I don't know if I'm reading this right, uh, to avoid confusion, if staff is given instructions, the board shall vote on such instructions and designated the board member who shall work with staff on any specific project. Is, is designated the right word to use?
No, it's designate, Bob.
Okay. That's my Pat Kerfoot impersonation for tonight.
It was really close. Okay, any other issues here? But I, I still want to come back to, I've gotten very sensitive to not calling anything that hasn't been at the town meeting, any kind of policy. Should we be concerned here? Planning board procedures?
I, I don't think so. I think you're well within your, your abilities to create policies and procedures related to.
To guide just the board.
To guide just the board and, and the activities of the board.
Okay. So, shall we adopt this as is?
So I make a motion that we adopt planning board policies and procedures as modified.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
So I can still argue about it anytime I want, though, right?
Anytime you want, and I know you're going to.
We got a three-minute limit, though.
In a designated room. Uh, committee reports, Pam?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, I would like to propose, I have to cover both things, um, that we have a separate, uh, meeting, so we can discuss some of the issues that is, that have, uh, come up for affordable housing, and, uh, so I'd like that on the, the next agenda.
May tenth?
May tenth is fine with me, if that's, okay. There's a lot of discussion going on within the committee and some outside of the committee about changing, and every time I, I think about it, you know, when a board puts so much time and energy into creating a bylaw, and then there's a, a wave of changes that people want to make, many of them very good, many of them worthwhile discussing, um, but I printed off all the towns in Falmouth, all the towns of Falmouth, on the Cape, and which town has an ADU by right? If there are family restruc- restrictions, um, minimal lots side, design standards, all sorts of things that we spent a lot of time sort of securing for the town, and now, I don't know, but a lot of the changes that people are proposing, and I say people, members of the Affordable Housing Committee and their supporters, who, we have very hefty meetings now. So, I think that we should discuss it and figure out what we should keep and what maybe we have to change, or we should change. And I talked to John earlier, things that I hadn't actually even thought of, like, does every ADU need a full kitchen? And members of the committee, and again, people that come to every meeting, think that's too expensive, that there doesn't have to be a full kitchen in every ADU.
Our bylaws don't call for any DU to have a full kitchen. Bylaw we passed doesn't say anything about that.
Doesn't mention kitchens.
Doesn't mention kitchens at all.
I'm, I'm just sharing with you some of the concerns.
Oh, okay, I thought it was something to do with our bylaws we had to change.
No, 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 oh, no, there are other things in there that people want changed.
What?
But you meant this for a future discussion item in addition to?
Yes, it's not on this agenda, so.
Right.
I want to wait, and, uh, um.
It's okay, I'm, I worked real hard on it, I just want to know what we're talking about, that's all.
Yeah, what came up?
I know you did.
But, okay.
Okay.
Let's finish that part, so do you want that second, uh, the ADU discussion also on the tenth, or do you want it on a subsequent meeting?
Doesn't matter to me.
So it depends on what the agenda's looking like, or one or two, yeah. Paul?
Yeah, I'd just like to add one, one other thing. John made a very interesting presentation last week about the last meeting, about the number of projects that are moving forward on affordable housing, and he segregated them by community preservation, uh, and the private development. And quite a few houses on, I don't remember the number, but quite a few. And I attended the selectmen's meeting the other night, and there was a discussion on the Pheasant Lane project.
The what project?
And the representative said that there were no affordable houses being built in Falmouth, and that flies in the face of what John is saying, and I thought that was unfortunate.
Who said that?
Who said that?
Well, the representative, who was there.
Oh, the representative said there were no affordable.
Said there weren't any, and it was an argument in favor of approving a house on Pheasant Lane, even though we and others said it was an unbuiltable lot.
We don't know who said that.
I do know.
Is it a secret?
I know what was.
There's no reason to get into personality, though.
I know what was printed in the enterprise, and that, if it's the same representative, said that only six, um, affordable houses had been built in the last three years, and the information that John had given us gave us very different numbers.
I'm, I'm just pointing out, there is some mis- misinformation out there, biasness for a particular project.
Now I know you don't read the enterprise as carefully as I thought you did, because there was a letter in this week's enterprise correcting that mistake.
Pointing out your point, number by number. Boom!
But more importantly, uh, last night, the select board named a housing coordinator at a, a full-time position. I don't recall her name, but she comes from the legal department.
Yeah.
Yep.
And she will be a great addition to the planning department.
She will, she will. Her name is Kim Fish, she's the, uh, current paralegal at the town council's office.
Okay.
And so she's making a very good transition over to town hall and taking over the housing coordinator position in mid-May.
I'm very aware of the legal issues around it.
Yep.
Right, which is really excellent. John, did you want to say something?
I, I just want to, uh.
Excuse me, can I just say something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If we do have this meeting, would it be appropriate to invite Ms. Fish?
I.
For us to meet her, as well as talk about the affordable housing.
Well, in order to do so, I believe she starts on mid-May, so May tenth would not line up for that, but we can delay the discussion until after she's started, if you'd like.
I think that would make a lot of sense.
Do you want to work with Jed on the timing for that? Pam?
Sure.
Works for me.
Okay, good. And see if she's, it, it means night work for her, so.
And it'd be nice to meet her as well, because you're gonna have to be working with her.
Right.
Okay?
All set?
You'll agree.
I do agree.
Last time you win.
John?
Uh, just to clarify for Paul, I, I think what the, that individual said in front of the selectmen's meeting was that in the last few years, five or six new homes have been built and occupied that are affordable, that single-family dwellings, uh, and most, a lot of my report was about apartments and single-family dwelling homes that are being constructed right now, but they, they haven't been occupied yet, most of them on my list for s- single-family homes. So they're under construction, and they're gonna have lotteries, but they, they were not included in that person's report to the selectman, because that person's only talking about the ones that have been built and, and sold to the lottery and occupied.
So you're saying that it was a miss, an, an incomplete quote in the enterprise?
I think both of us were correct. That person and my report.
That's a very good outcome.
It was just two different reports.
Yeah.
And, but I would also like to add that I, I received an email today from Assistant Town Planner that we have two new applications for, um, our, uh, Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, and we're gonna have a meeting in a couple of weeks and start to vet those new applications. So we have more affordable housing coming, most likely.
Coming along, and apparently at Paul's Automotive, is that its name? Um, there will be a Mr. Cod, and it's not a big one.
Mixed residential and commercial overlay district.
Excuse me, mixed commercial residential. I don't have that same objection to Mr. Cod.
Or M R C O D.
You'll go with that?
I've heard that as well.
Mr. Cod.
Nope, M R C O D.
We just agreed as a group not to speak that way, so the public could know what we're talking about. When you're talking code, it's really hard for the public to know.
That's true.
So that's the only reason, sure, we all know what it is, but somebody read it, what the hell they talking about?
And who is Mr. Cod?
We can go back to Talking Dakota, I don't care.
No, oh, don't get used to giving up, it's not a good thing. All right, any.
Well, I just feel outnumbered, so I don't have, don't have to fight about everything.
Not every time.
Pick your battles. Yeah.
I like Cod.
Other committee reports, Paul?
Yeah, not particularly committee report, I attended the water quality management meeting last night, this afternoon, and it was a very interesting presentation about a number of different issues, and one was how sea level rise will affect the groundwater. As it comes up, some of these septic systems will no longer function properly.
Right.
So it was a lengthy discussion on that, and I took an opportunity to mention, while sitting next to Mr. Brown, that the cost of resiliency report strongly recommended the cost of resiliency coordinator be hired by the town to begin the process of dealing with many of these issues. So, uh, I'm not sure where that is right now. I spoke with, uh, Assistant Town Manager a week or so ago, and I asked him about the vote of the, uh, Select Board on December sixth to move forward and hire a consultant, and he said there was funding in there in 2022, which is available now, so it would be nice to move that forward, if possible, because I think that's going to be a key position for a lot of different departments, including our own.
I think that, um, uh, it's good that you've done that. I think the select board has heard actually from a number of people on how important it is, but particularly the environmental and energy people, how important it is to move forward filling those positions. Um, the position, I think this board probably most immediately will take an interest in, is being sure that the Assistant Town Planner position, which is now vacant, that that gets filled, because we have a lot of work in front of this board. Um, we, uh, we're working on, uh, the second phase of recodification, it's getting complicated, and we want to be able to bring things to the November, uh, town meeting and to the subsequent spring town meeting, but we also need to get started on our, uh, next long-range comprehensive plan. The Cape Cod Commission has had its directions out, what, I think they're three years old now. They came out before COVID, and we have not, um, acted on it, and we need to. So we're in the position of not having, I believe, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, we do not have an approved, uh, local comprehensive plan.
They were in transition.
Right.
When we fixed, when we finished ours, they were using our plan as one of the examples for what they would like to see.
Right.
One of the examples.
So we got the sense that it's approvable and, and likeable, but we didn't get an approved town plan as a result of that. So we don't want to stay in that position for very long, and we want to be able to start, uh, forming our subcommittee and get a, a, a strategy going as a way to, to do that plan.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, one of the reasons, aside from the fact that it's a good thing to have it approved, is that once the, the local comprehensive plan is approved, it opens up sources of funding as well.
Yes.
That we don't currently have, because it's not approved.
Right. Okay.
That's a big job.
Yeah, it's going to be a big job, really. Any other committee reports? Anybody been to any other committee meetings? Okay, good, any announcements? No? Correspondence?
Well, I was just going to announce that our recodification meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Uh, at eleven o'clock.
Right, and we had homework for that meeting.
We absolutely do. The working group will be discussing the difference between home occupation and home-based service businesses. We will also be looking at our definitions. Uh, planning department's put together a master document where we've identified some things that need a definition and perhaps some tweaks, and then we'll be going over some of our current errors and omissions that we plan to bring forward to town meeting in the fall.
Others on this board tonight might have some idea, but it seemed to me, in trying to do my homework, that if we were supposed to go over the definition section and see if there were any definitions missing, words that have come into use that, uh, since that was last put together, or are not defined in a way that you like, um, now would be the time to fix them, and the only one I can remember, um, coming to this board and turning out to be an issue to us, is the word structure. We had wanted to look closely at that and be sure that in some fashion we have, uh, some planning board role in ground-mounted structures. I don't recall another definition issued. Do any of you? No, I know it's late to be asking, but, okay.
Well, it's an ongoing topic, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we'll certainly be asking the board members, uh, all the way through this process to get us, uh, a full definition list, and that's going to last through this whole recodification process, so definitely not too late.
It'll be there, and I think that probably definition, uh, fine points of definition come more to the ZBA than to us, so we'll see, I know Norine's caught with some things. And we're also looking tomorrow, Jim, at the, um, ADU language. So, I think I'm going to email that to you and see what you think of it.
You changing it?
Adding to it, maybe.